June 9th, 2025 Farmington Planning Commission. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Majors.
Here.
Manti.
Here.
Here.
Weston Doris.
Here.
All right, full house. I like it. Item number two, approval of the items on the consent agenda or meeting minutes from April the 3rd and April 14th. Do we have any comments or questions concerning the minutes from staff or from commissioners? I see a lot of side to side head shaking. All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve items on the consent agenda for April 3rd and April 14th.
With support.
Motion made and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number three, approval of the regular agenda for this evening. Do we have any questions or edits, comments concerning tonight's agenda?
No comment on the content, but a requested agenda modification just due to availability of folks that are going to be here to review items. I'd like to move that we approve the agenda with a modification under item five, new business, that we reorder the proposed seating for Blueberry Brunch, move that from 5A to 5C, move 5B, which is Sante, up to the 5A position, and the current 5C concept plan review into the 5B position. With that, I would make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
With support.
Motion made and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number four, unfinished business listed as none. So we'll go ahead and jump to item number five, new business. And could we have the petitioner from Sante, please step up to the podium?
Good evening. May it please the commission, my name is Casey Fetzer and I am one of the co-owners of Sante. We are a wine tasting room that is soon to open here in downtown Farmington on Grand River. As you can see from the pictorial here, we've got what will be the wine tasting room storefront. This was the previous Brown Dog property. We are here today seeking approval from the commission for an outdoor seating area. This is to be utilized in the same manner as the previous owners were utilizing the seating in the area. We are proposing four tables with eight chairs. This is an example of what the current area looks like. It is shared with our neighbors, the basement burger bar, in the same manner again in which it was shared with the previous owners. And this is an example of the table and chairs we are seeking to purchase, which we believe do fit well with the look and feel of the downtown area already. And with that, that is all I had to present, but I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Open it up to comments or questions for the petitioner?
Next only question, is the seating arrangement, is this pretty much identical to what was there before?
In terms of the arrangement of the table and chairs?
And the same number?
I believe so. I'm trying to think back to their setup, but I think it's very, very close.
Yeah. I'll put a motion out there. I would make a motion that we approve outdoor seating for Sante because located at 33314 Grand River for the proposed outdoor seating proposal because the plans meet the standards of section 35-102B of the zoning ordinance, central business district contingent upon receipt of proof of insurance, naming the city as an additional insured, in a form and amount deemed acceptable by the city's attorney's office, a license agreement in a form deemed acceptable to the city attorney's office, and an MDOT approved outdoor seating permit.
With support.
Motion made and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our new item number two, the concept planned review for the Art Promenade.
Hello, I'm Claire Perko and I'm chair of the design committee here and on the DDA board, so I'm coming to talk to you about this plan here. There we go. So this gives you an idea of where the site is. It connects the new Hillside Towns to Riley Park. It's the two houses that were currently on the property have been demolished right now. It's staging for the construction and we're proposing on putting in what we have called the promenade art park to connect these two pivotal areas eventually down to Chiawasi Park, we're hoping. So this is the overall graphic plan. This was one of the earlier renderings, but it gives you an idea of how it flows from Hillside Towns. So this is the Hillside Towns part and then the other half is the Art Park Promenade. That's what it looks like right now. And this is what it's going to look like in the future. So we have these ideas of possibly activating it with chalk art, with kids' games, furnishings. We have turf grass, plantings, and hopefully it will be a location for some really great art. This is one of the big benches that's going in for this original concept. Our original concept doesn't have a lot of furnishings or a lot of art. Right now, we're using it kind of as a framework for other large sculptural pieces. We want to be able to have places to put art and go out for bid for art and have other installations. This is a piece that we are using. It's site furniture is what it is, but it's also very artistic. So it's one big piece of concrete mixed and it's going to be a really nice focal point in our space. This gives you the overall, it goes from the more linear elements coming off of Grand River to more curvilinear going into the Hillside Towns. We're going to be repurposing some of the big picnic tables that we have over in Memorial Park, we're moving into this space. We're going to be, you know, using our resources wisely to do that. We're using the big boulders that used to be on the corner of Grand River and Farmington are now going to be in this location. So we're really reusing some of the things that we have in the area. So this is the overall concept. There will be lighting, there will be paving, there will be an overall, there'll be trash receptacles and some of the bear and ground plane and plant material and all of that. It'll feel like a park, but it might feel just a little bit empty at first because we're hoping to fill it with really cool stuff. So that gives you an idea of the overall planting plan. There's going to be trees and shrubs. We're having fencing on either side to help delineate it from the adjoining properties. We have open lawn area for playing, we have artificial turf. This allows area for tents to be put up in the future. We have room for about 10 or so tents for festivals and things of that nature. There will be power in the park, there will be water access. And that's kind of the overall. What kind of questions do you guys have?
Yes, sir.
Before we get to questions, I'd also like to read the staff report, just to put it into the...
Sure.
So this is a limited review of the city's plans to build a public park on the property that was acquired by the city for that purpose as part of the Hillside Towns redevelopment of the Maxfield Training Center. The planning commission will recall that it conducted the public hearing for and then reviewed and approved the plan unit development for the multifamily housing project before it went to the city council for final approval and closing on the sale of the property last year. The housing part of the project is now under consideration. As part of its request for proposals to redevelop the MTC site, city council asked the developers who bid on the property to also propose improvements to two other properties the city owned located at 33104 Grand River and 33107 Thomas Street. The city had acquired these parcels over time with the expectation that the buildings on them would be demolished and the property turned into a city park. Robertson Brothers PUD approval for Hillside Towns provided for them to, for several things. One, to take title to the two parcels. Two, to demolish the two buildings. And three, to grade and cede the property to get it ready for the city to make the necessary improvements to turn it into a park. And then four, to reconvey title to the land to the city. Robertson Brothers has done the first three of those things, so the next step in the process is for the city to finish up the designs for the park improvements, which is what Claire's going over now. Because this is a city public improvement, the commission is not technically conducting a full site plan review. That's because the city is not technically subject to its zoning ordinance. Rather, the commission is to undertake a more limited review of the location, character, and extent of the proposed park improvements, which is under section 61 of the Planning Enabling Act. And that section of the act says that a street, square, park, playground, public way, ground, or other open space, or public building or other structure shall not be constructed or authorized for construction in an area covered by a municipal master plan unless the location, character, and extent of the street, public way, open space, structure, or utility have been submitted to the planning commission by the legislative body or other body having jurisdiction over the authorization or financing of the project and has been approved by the planning commission. So again, the commission is not being asked to comment or review on the detailed aspects of this plan like you would for a normal site plan for a private development. You are only commenting on and approving the location, character, and extent of the proposed improvements. So just wanted to let you know it's a different scope than usual for what's coming before the planning commission.
Yeah, I think we've had this in front of us many, many, many times.
Yeah.
It's changed, it's, you know, it's kind of, the scope of it has kind of changed over the years and, I mean, we're, you know, most of us have families and kids and, you know, we enjoy being downtown and we just, we're slowly, you know, and strategically growing, you know, the quality of life downtown and this is going to be another big part of it. I do have one question.
Sure.
And you're a pretty smart lady, so I'm pretty sure you can be able to answer it. So I've been a farmer's market volunteer for years and I'm always looking at places like this because it's so close to proximity to Riley Park, so we could possibly expand it and, you know, and figure that part out. In one of the graphics, it shows, and if memory serves me, the idea was to have removable bollards so that in the event that we did, like farmer's market vendors or other types of art vendors or whatever, that you would be able to drive a vehicle for setup and breakdown through there. And, but it's only, it only shows bollards on like one of them?
Right.
And it's one of the drawings?
Yes.
Is that still?
So due to cost constraints, the paving cannot handle the weight of a full-size vehicle.
Ah.
But that doesn't mean that we can't put up farmers' tents there?
Yeah.
With little gators or smaller vehicles?
Yeah.
Or having people park at either end and bring their stuff in.
Yeah.
And that's why, or even like a small cart. I know now we have like the little coffee carts or the, those things aren't that, those types of...
Just not vehicles?
Yeah, just not vehicles. We couldn't have like a food truck sitting back here because of the vehicle weight.
Okay.
But as far as like it's powered for it, we could have tents back there. We could expand it. So yes.
Okay, so all the logistics would just be on School Street?
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously not on Grand River. Okay, I just jumped off the page at me and...
Yeah, no, that's a, it's a good question and yes, we were thinking for that and we're hoping to have tents back there and things like that.
Yeah. Very good, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Comments or questions?
No, I think it looks great.
Yeah, I think so.
I'd make a motion that we approve the concept plans for the Art Park Promenade located at 33104 Grand River and 33107 Thomas Street because the location, character, and extent of the improvements are consistent with the requirements of the Hillside Towns Plan Unit Development Approval and PUD Agreement and with the city's master plan for the downtown area.
With support.
Motion made and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our new item number three for Blueberry Brunch. Do we have petitioners from Blueberry Brunch?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chris.
Good.
Good.
You just start with your name and just kind of give us a summary of what you have proposed and what you'd like us to take into consideration.
I'm Anton Deema. I own Blueberry Brunch, obviously. Just looking to open up some front patio, expand the space a little bit.
So we have, just up on the screen, there's, and if you wanted to speak to the screen, there's the portable microphone. Just kind of give us a, just kind of a brief overview of, you know, the layout of the land. I think for the most part, we're all pretty familiar with the space. We've seen a lot of different businesses kind of come and go. But just kind of give us your overview of where you propose to do things and, because I, just my understanding of the property, there's seating in the front, there's seating on the side of, is that Grove Street? I think it's Grove Street. So just kind of walk us through the space and what you, what you have proposed for tonight.
All right, well, um...
Just carry the microphone with you. Yep. There you go.
All right, so we're proposing to add four tables to the front facing the park, if you will, the downtown area, just to have like a little bit of a better view, obviously expand the seating a little bit, get people a little bit more comfortable. As far as the rest, we already have these ones which we were approved for, which are on the side, like you said, facing Grove Street. And eventually we'd like to be a part of the syndicate, adding alcohol, all that good stuff.
Okay. All right, I'll open it up to questions from commissioners for the petitioner?
Is there, is there fencing, existing fencing there or is fencing getting added to kind of cordon off the seating from the sidewalk?
Added, yes.
So you'll be adding fencing and...
Okay.
What is that going to look like?
Yeah, did I miss seeing that?
I mean, there's no example of what the fence looks like. I mean, we've seen it in plan, but we don't...
Okay.
Sorry.
Know what it's going to look like? Like a picture of...
I don't think I have a picture of it, do you? Yeah, I don't think I have a picture, but it's fencing that they have...
Good.
Zoom in there, it's at the top right corner.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I see the elevation, but is there a, similar to the previous applicant? I mean, is there a picture of what the railing is going to look like? Is it something portable? Is it going to be fixed? Is it...
No, it's going to be fixed. It's the black fencing that they have around, behind Mosa, that same, the very plain black fencing that goes around, I think, a few downtown Farmington businesses. That kind of cuts them off from like the sidewalk, if you will. If that makes any sense.
It's like a permanent metal, like bolted to the columns that support the canopy?
Exactly. And between the chiropractor and us, and then the opening for the doorway, it'll be just like a...
So is it a permanent fence?
Yeah, it's just going to be attached to the column, yes.
And the tables and chairs are similar to what you've got on the side?
It should be the exact same, yeah. That's what we're buying.
A question perhaps more for staff, with where the proposed fencing location is, the applicants meeting all with the sidewalk or whatever the right kind of terminology is to make sure that there's ability to move forward because there's also outdoor seating on this at the masa, the Mexican restaurant, but are we aligned with sidewalk width separation from the, from where the fence is to where the sidewalk is? I'm assuming we're good there.
We did make sure that there was five feet of clearance.
Five feet, okay, thank you.
This is probably a statement or comment more towards staff as well. I believe there's usually a trash can sitting around those columns there. That's, I'm assuming that's going to have to get moved, it's a city trash can. Just to give that five feet space that you're talking about.
Yeah, it's making it closer to the corner, maybe?
Yeah.
I think it is close, it's between the column and the corner.
Yeah, so that might have to get moved.
No, it's on the other side of the column.
It's already moved, they moved it.
Oh, it is? Okay. All right.
Yeah, it's not in their seating area, it's on the other side of the column.
Right, but that's going to then impede on that walkway.
Hmm.
Maybe it's already been moved. I know they moved them around.
They moved the last because of a B problem, so they moved it all the way to the corner.
Got it.
Kind of like, to the right of the...
If I could respond to that, this particular business, different from masa, is table service. They'll be cleaning the tables. The trash can is part of the center's responsibility, it's not their trash.
That's why I was directing it towards the city.
Yeah, and it's, the masa, who is under the old set of rules, eventually will be notified and as a group, all of those, there's just not a lot, but a few of those businesses that have tables and chairs, we're going to bring them to you as a group.
Yep.
So that they have the same approval process as the people with the permanent seating that had been done in the past. This is their first trip. Naturally, the side was approved previously, long time ago, and it stayed with the restaurant. The front is new and that's why they're here, for the couple of tables in the front.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, I did not get to see these, but are these tables and chairs, are these plastic, are they metal?
They're like a faux marble. So the chairs are metal?
Chairs are metal.
The base of the tables are metal and the top is like the faux marble, whatever it's called.
Thank you, okay, I appreciate that.
So the reason we ask is, it's not that we're trying to grill here or anything like that, but typically when we get proposals like this, a lot of folks will bring in, if they don't have, like if they're not expanding pre-existing, like a pre-existing fence, for example, they'll bring in like samples or even images from like the manufacturer so that we can get a feel for and visualize what it's going to look like. Because a big part of our responsibility is, is one, is obviously making sure that it suits, you know, ordinances, local ordinances and things like that, but also does it suit the area? Does it, is it going to affect, is something going to affect the neighbors? Because, and I hate to say it, but we have had people that have brought things in and it looked like cheesy stuff from like the depot and that's not, you know, that's not, it doesn't fit the character of the area.
I feel you, yeah.
You know, so we want to be careful. That's how we ended up with such a nice Grand River, you know, and now we're bringing it along with the Farmington streetscape is because we've been really careful to make sure that folks understand that, you know, we don't want garden furniture from the Home Depot or Lowe's as permanent fixtures, you know what I'm saying? So that's, that's the only reason that we ask, because...
Actually, I was talking to him too, I was going towards more of like a spruce and ash feel if I were to change it over.
Okay.
I really like the ways theirs look.
Hmm.
So that's really where eventually we'll be going, but for now, just to get approved and everything and then we'll be back with the new furniture and however that process goes.
Okay.
Can talk to the owner, he made those things out there.
Really? Wow. He did good work out there. Looks beautiful.
You can hire him.
Maybe.
Don't tell him I told you to call him.
All right, do we have any other questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, I do have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there like going to be like a waiting area? Because now currently, like if the blueberry is full, people wait outside, right?
Yeah.
For their time calls. So with the seating area now, where are people expected to wait for their seats?
Pretty much, we were going to do, we were going to see how that goes, to be honest with you, like Jeff was saying, it's going to be brand new to us too, so if it does get too crowded. I was thinking maybe just make one of the sides a waiting area, if you will, especially being with the bar opening up with the alcohol and stuff, like a little hangout place, if you will, before you get sat, if it gets overcrowded. But they've been, the people have been really good with that, you know, they've kind of been moving around, going to TJ Maxx, going this, that while they wait, because there is no, honestly, no space to wait.
Yeah. Because without the, without the outside seating, there's enough space for people to wait outside without blocking the entrance to the other stores, right? Next to you?
Hopefully they'll continue to just wander.
But it's good business.
Yeah.
That's why people wait, right?
For sure.
Yeah, to his point, you know, while they wait, they can go shop somewhere else too, right?
Yeah.
And now he's got more tables, so they don't have to wait.
That's the idea, exactly, so we can kind of turn over a little bit more and get rid of that wait as best as we can with the space that we have.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the outdoor seating for Blueberry Brunch located at 2336 Farmington Road because the plans as submitted meet the standards of section 35-102B of the zoning ordinance of the central business district.
Support.
Motion made and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
All right, item number six, update on current developments and projects around town, Mr. Chris?
Yep, so I'll apologize, I've been out of town for a couple of weeks, so I haven't had a chance to pull together a report on that for planning commission for this meeting, but I will have one for the next.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
I will say that a piece... I will say that Piss Tacos is open, and I enjoy their tater tots at the pool.
Yeah. Nice.
Is that the one down by Rolling Stoves?
Yes.
Same owner. Yeah, same owner. Yeah, good for them.
Is it really?
Yeah. Yeah, they're humming right along. And from what I understand, he did all the work himself. So good on him.
All right, public comment. Do we have a motion to open public comment?
Motion to open public comment.
Support.
Motion made and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. If anyone from the public would like to step up. All right, seeing none. Motion to close.
Motion to close public comment.
Support.
Motion made and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Planning, item number eight, planning commission comment. Do we have any other miscellaneous comments, concerns, questions for staff or from staff? All right, seeing none. Do we have a motion to close?
Motion to close public comment?
No, that's, we're past public.
Oh, sorry.
Yep. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion made and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.
Good night.